Councilmember Maria Buchanan Jr.
Present.
Councilmember Luis Cabrera.
Present.
Councilmember José Ponce.
Present.
Councilmember Matías Rosales.
Present.
Councilmember Gloria Torres.
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Can we all stand for the pledge of allegiance? Councilmember Torres, could you lead us with the pledge of allegiance, please?
Let us pray. Oh Lord, many are our plans, but it is your plans that prevail. You know each one of us here better than we know ourselves. All of us want this meeting to be successful, but Lord, you know what is best for all of us. Open up our hearts and minds that we may know the hope to which you have called us. Give us boldness to speak what you have placed in our hearts and help us to follow your will. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Sonia, we have a proclamation today?
Yes, we do, Mayor.
Okay, item number 4A, 2021 Extra Mile Day, November 1st, 2021. Sonia?
2021 Extra Mile Day, November 1st, 2021. Whereas San Luis, Arizona is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. And whereas San Luis, Arizona is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And whereas San Luis, Arizona is a community which chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas San Luis, Arizona acknowledges the mission of Extra Mile America to create 550 extra-mile cities in America and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November 1st, 2021. Now therefore, bid resolve that Gerardo Sánchez, mayor of the city of San Luis, Arizona, does hereby proclaim November 1st, 2021 to be Extra Mile Day. He urges each individual in the community to take time on this day to not only go the extra mile in his or her own life, but to also acknowledge all those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, community, country, or world a better place, dated this 27th day of October, 2021.
Thank you, Sonia. In regards to the proclamation, the Extra Mile Day, yes, San Luis represents the Extra Mile Day. San Luis has proven over the years, I've seen so many people take that extra mile when it comes to when someone's in need, when this pandemic hit, when the asylum seekers started crossing, people stepped up to the plate, went, did that extra mile. It's amazing how this community in times of need, they show their true character. And especially recently, we've had 12 vaccination clinics and people have stepped up to the mile. They have, there's more people getting vaccinated in our city compared to other communities. There are more people using their face shield, face masks, there are more people taking care. There's a reason why we have had lower numbers of COVID compared to other communities because people have stepped up, they did that extra mile. And I'm just grateful, I am so, and we are so blessed to have this community that in times of need, they step it up and they go that extra mile. I'm just very proud, I'm very proud of council, I'm very proud of our staff. Thank you for taking that extra mile because you do it every day. So I just want to commend you also. Thank you. We're going to go ahead and go with the consent agenda. All matters are considered routine by the city council and enacted by one motion. The discussion desired, all the items will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Minute of work session held October 6th, 2021. Regular council meeting held October 13th, 2021. Disbursements from October 5th, 2021 through October 18th, 2021. Total disbursement $706,523.28. I will now adjourn the motion.
May I make the motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
There's a motion on the floor, there's a second. Oh, it's in favor?
Aye.
Oh, it's against? Motion carries. We're going to go with discussion of possible action items. Item number 6A, discussion of possible action, all matters regarding the approval and authorization of the transfer of funds from the general and non-departmental and the HERF contractual services account to risk management cancer fund expenses account. Monica Castro, Director of Finance. Monica.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. During the state budget, the aid fees that we pay were repealed. At the same time, the legislature established a cancer reimbursement fund. The purpose of the cancer reimbursement fund is to provide municipalities with reimbursement for claims related to cancer matters for their firefighters. Beginning this year and forward, we are required to make this payment. We did not budget for this assessment, but because the state repealed the aid fees which we were paying in the past, we have budgeted pretty much, it was kind of a replacement. So in order to make the payment appropriately, the league is recommending that we move those funds from where we have them budgeted and we move them to the risk management account, that is the most appropriate account to handle those payments. So we are asking council approval to transfers fund from the HERF and non-departmental account. Good evening, Mayor, council members. During the state budget, the aid fees that we pay were repealed. At the same time, the legislature established a cancer reimbursement fund. The purpose of the cancer reimbursement fund is to provide municipalities with reimbursement for claims related to cancer matters for their firefighters. Beginning this year and forward, we are required to make this payment. We did not budget for this assessment, but because the state repealed the aid fees which we were paying in the past, we have budgeted pretty much, it was kind of a replacement. So in order to make the payment appropriately, the league is recommending that we move those funds from when we have them budgeted, and we move them to the risk management account, that is the most appropriate account to handle those payments. So we are asking council approval to transfers fund from the HERF and non-departmental account where we had the budget to the risk management account to pay for these invoices.
Good. Any questions from council? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve and authorize the official to execute the transfer of funds as stated in this fiscal impact of this agenda item to cover the invoice from the industrial commission of Arizona as presented.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor, there's a second. All is in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All is against? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Monica. Item number six B, public hearing followed by discussion of possible action on matters regarding major amendment case number 2021-0335 and resolution number 219, a resolution of the mayor and city council of San Luis amending the 2040 general plan to change the land use designation of 429.53 acres from commercial, see, and employment to medium-density residential and 37.48 acres from employment to commercial on land located on the south corner of County 24th Street and Avenue E. I will now entertain a motion to open public hearing. Some move?
Second.
There's a motion on the floor, there's a second. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All is against? Motion carries. Now it's open to the public. Jose?
Good evening, Mayor, vice mayor, council members. As per the state regulations, the city is required to present all the major general plan amendments during the same council meeting. This year, we received three applications. So for the next three items, just to give you a brief summary of the process, all the applications that are submitted, staff does the research and does the report based on the application and the documents that are submitted. We don't give direction or recommendations to the applicants, and the recommendation is based on the adopted general plan policies. And always our priority is to protect the public interest and not a specific developer, our applicant. With that being said, this is the first case. This is a request to change 429 acres from commercial and employment to residential and 37 acres from employment to commercial. As mentioned, the recommendation from staff is based on what is submitted and based on the general plan policies. All the details of the report are on the staff report. This is specific case, the applicant changed the sumetor three times, removing some properties from the request. One last change was proposed and presented to the planning and zoning commission meeting, which is to expand the proposed commercial area. During the same meeting, they presented the proposed layout of the property, but that was never submitted during the application process. They were aware of the requirements, since this application was applied for back in 2019, and the staff made the same recommendation as 2019 to get together with all the owners on Avenue E and create a master plan for the whole area. So I just wanted to clarify that the proposal that will be presented by the applicant is not the original sumetor that staff received on the original application. All the information is in the report. Staff recommendation is to approve the change from employment to commercial and to deny the change from commercial to medium-density residential. We presented this item to the planning and zoning commission, and a motion was made to recommend denial, but the motion didn't pass because it was too old. So the commission was advised that they needed to make a recommendation in order for council to make a decision. So they mentioned that there will be boring in order to allow the project to move forward to council. So a second motion was made to recommend approval, and the motion passed 4-0. So on the report, we have three different options for the motions. The option number one is staff recommendation. Option number two is the recommendation that was made by the commission, which is approval of the application. And option three is motion 2-9. The applicant is here. Do you have any question for them, or?
Is the applicant here?
Yep.
Can we listen from them? What are your plans? A brief?
If I may?
How are you doing?
Good. How are you?
Good, good. I just want, I just want to hear it for, for the record, a brief, what are your plans for this development, for this land?
So we had a very brief presentation. Don't know if that was passed over to the city clerk. Do you have that queued up? So my name is Tom DeBose, and I'm, my company is DeBose Design Group. My office is in El Centro, California. I'm representing David Lu and Elizabeth Carpenter and their various corporations and companies in this particular area. This entire process, we have attempted to share with staff, planning and zoning, and now you, our reasons and justifications for our request for a change. We know that general plan amendments are allowed every year, and we hope that this one will be considered as a benefit and why we would make that change. We have tried to provide various ways of justifying our application. The, what you'll see on the screen is pointing out how little private land is owned in the area, because the majority of the land in East San Luis is either government by federal or by state. And when you looked at your general plan, much of your growth is on federal or state land, which is nearly impossible to try to purchase and develop. So my clients own some of the only remaining private land, and we were hoping your consideration. Next slide. The other justification that we've tried to do is explain why we think the city has overplanned industrial and commercial. And what we did in the other presentations was talk about the examples along the border, and we highlighted Nogales and Calexico and Otay Mesa. And at the end of the day, there's much more land south of the border in industrial than there is north. And so we believe that in your general plan, you are calling for a lot more than you will ever possibly use. Next slide, please. So this is our application, and as Jose said, as we dove in a little deeper, we decided that the corner of 24th and Avenue E, the southeast corner, that a 38-acre commercial plot that would allow for a commercial development would make more sense. And so otherwise, this is our medium-density residential application with the outskirts being the higher side of the density of the medium density. Next slide, please. In our presentations, we've also tried to talk about what the general plan calls for is infrastructure and, you know, the ability of having water and wastewater service. And so there's an existing sewer lift station down at the southeast corner of the property that will serve this entire property, a new water well that the city desires will be on my client's property. We've talked about the general plan and the layout of the street pattern and the grid pattern, and the future alternative route of Avenue E that would go east on 25th over to Avenue B. Next slide, please. Through the process, we were asked to show and share what it would look like inside this land use mix. So we provided this particular map, and it's about 2,400 units between single-family and the higher-density multifamily inside the medium density with some commercial, a couple of school sites in the future, because all of this is going to create the need for additional school sites, and so we're planning for that going in. And you can see that we also broke it out into phases, with the first two phases being west of Avenue D and a half, and the other phases through the east side of that. Next slide. We were asked to take a look at the school needs beyond our subdivision. And so my clients went out and made arrangements for the first Somerton school site will not be built within the land area that we're proposing, but it'll be west over off of Avenue F. And so those plans are moving forward. That was a request made, and so we also provided that. So quickly in summary, we're seeking an amendment to your general plan to allow for a planned and comprehensive development. Our proposal has always been live, workshop, and prosper in San Luis, Arizona. We want to provide schools, we want to provide multiple avenues of housing, both single-family and multifamily. The jobs for San Luis are going to come from manufacturing that will need this housing. You're about out of lots in San Luis, and so we feel like this will support the remaining industrial that you will keep. We had Nicholas Engineering do a traffic study. That is going to be going forward to your public works director. And so finally, our request of you would be that you approve the planning and zoning recommendation of our full application request. And other than that, I have, I can answer questions you might have.
Well, thank you. That was very thorough. Thank you so much. Any questions from council? Concerns?
No.
No? Okay, good. Thank you. I will now call for, this is opened to the public hearing. I'm going to request the clerk, if there's any call to the public person who wanted to comment regarding this topic?
Yes, Mayor, we have a few. We have David Lu.
David? Yes, okay, good. Anyone else?
Elizabeth Carpenter.
You're good. Anyone else?
Russ Jones.
Russ Jones?
Thank you, Mayor and council for allowing me to speak. My name is Russell Jones, for the record. I am a landowner and business owner in the Magrino Industrial Park out at San Luis East. And I stand in partial opposition to the proposal, and I'll explain that. I don't necessarily object to the change for commercial, because some of those services are certainly needed out in that area to service the industrial and international freight community that is growing dramatically out there. San Luis East is the fastest-growing commercial port of entry in the entire land border jurisdiction of CBP, over 200% a year. And everything we see out there indicates that that's not going to change anytime soon. So at the peak of this season, we expect to see 500 truck a day, one way. And so when we get to 1,000 two ways, we're talking some significant traffic on east either. It's true, there is lift stations, there is infrastructure. When San Luis East was built, all of the land that is being proposed for change was agricultural. And it's the same people that are here this evening proposing that there are zoning change that ask for the agricultural zoning to be changed to industrial and commercial. I'm sure they thought that there may have been the need for that much, but the community accommodated them. Not your fault. You did not overplan. People overask for the zoning that's out there. Many of us out there, myself included, and a number of the other logistics folks at the time, explained to everyone that the amount that they're asking for are exceeded the probable demand in the near future. But nonetheless, the changes were granted, and they got that new designation. The citrus that was out there was removed. The infrastructure that's out there is there because of other residential development that is to the west and is respecting the quarter-mile buffer to Avenue, to E Street. And the balance of the infrastructure was paid for by the tenants ourselves in the development of the Magrino Industrial Park. And so certainly, if you're looking to develop land, the cheapest land is the land that or the infrastructure has been developed for you. First, there is other land available in San Luis. It is more expensive. The development costs are probably higher. But, you know, I don't blame anybody for trying to make the best of a business for an opportunity. But my problem is, there is a total act of planning and infrastructure to support the volumes of traffic and people that will be generated from this development. And without a plan, the many, many years that many of us spent getting San Luis Main changed the first time, and now to be shortly improved again, and getting San Luis East appropriated and built is going to go by the wayside. We've put a lot of time and effort in this community over many, many, many years to have that infrastructure built for it. This is not the time to move quickly. Not that we don't need development out there, but I think it's very premature. I read this morning's paper how we're going to soon have a connection from 18th, County 18th to 195, that Somerton is coming out because they want access to the port. I've heard other presentations where we're looking at extending 24th Street, because when the new port goes in with 16 lanes, what, how San Luis deals with the traffic in the main, in the downtown area is going to be a critical question and require great real resources and thought. So with all of those other things going on, I think it's highly premature to approve such a development as this without knowing for sure how we're going to pay for it. I was at a meeting recently of the Magrino Industrial Park tenants and owners, and the members that are out there, even though they paid for their infrastructure, agreed that we would be willing to participate in forming a new transportation and maintenance district to properly plan, develop, and build, and pay for transportation infrastructure for that area. And I thought, you know, it's pretty big a folks that already paid for it to be willing to step up and pay so much again for it, because it's that important. So I would recommend that the housing portion not be approved at present until full studies and a district is able to be formed. Thank you, Mayor and council.
Glad to answer your question.
I just want to clarify that this is not approval of a development. This is appro, this is, this is only a major amendment. For clarification for council, okay? If there's more questions, more concerns, I will now entertain a motion to close public hearing.
I'll move, Mayor.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor. There's a second. All's in favor?
Aye.
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 All's against? Motion carries. I will now entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2198, approving major general plan amendment, case number 2021-0335, as recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
There's a motion on the floor. There's a second. All's in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. All's against? Motion carries. Action item number 6D. Public hearing followed by discussion and public action on all matters regarding major amendment case number 2021-0340 and resolution number 2200. A resolution of the Mayor and City Council of San Luis Obispo amending the 2040 general plan to change the land use designation of land located in the southeast corner of County 23rd and a Half Street and Avenue E from commercial to medium-density residential. I will now entertain a motion to open public hearing.
I'll move.
Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. For clarification, I read number 6D.
Thank you.
I'm going back to 6C. Public hearing followed by discussion, action on all matters regarding major amendment case number 2021-0337 and resolution number 2199. The resolution of the Mayor and City Council of San Luis Obispo amending the 2040 general plan to change the land use designation of 20 acres of land located in the southeast, I'm sorry, northeast corner of 20th Avenue and County 24th and a Half Street from commercial to medium-density resolution. I will now entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll move. Second.
There's a motion. There's a second. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All's against? Motion carries. Jose Guzman, Director of Planning and Zoning.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. So this property is part of originally 40 acres, which was, was divided in two parcels in order to comply with the requirement for a minor amendment, which the property to the north was the application for a minor amendment that was denied last month based on traffic concerns. So based on that, meeting staff had to amend the recommendation to, for denial for this application, because otherwise, the north 20 acres will be.
In the middle.
Will have a, yeah, land use of commercial between residential. So that is recommended, denial, declaration, recommended approval. We have three different options, two different options as the motion. So if the traffic study for the minor amendment, they resubmitted the application, and they're working on a traffic study.
So they are working on a traffic study?
Yeah, and we're processing the minor amendment application again. So if that addresses council's concerns regarding the traffic.
And no issues? There's no issues with right-of-way?
No. This property is south of County 24th.
So there's no issues?
No, not regarding this specific property.
Any questions from council?
Sure.
Is the developer here?
Yeah, the applicant is here.
Just a quick, what's, what's your plans for this subdivision or this, this, this location?
Good evening. I'm Jonathan Klein with Core Engineering Group. We'd like to thank the mayor, the vice mayor, and the council and the staff for their time and consideration. We're moving to change from commercial to medium-density residential so that we can ultimately rezone this 40 acres to R16 in order to meet the demands of residential in east San Luis. But after being denied the minor amendment application, we've resubmitted and heard council's concerns. We have entered negotiations, or we're obtaining a contract with the company to provide the traffic study, to study the impact of the 40 acres of R16. And we are willing to provide all of the required right-of-way and dedicate it to the city of San Luis as we go through this development process. So if there are any other questions, we'd be happy to answer, or.
I have no more questions. Thank you. Thank you for resubmitted, and thank you for doing what we asked for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from council? Do we have any?
Yes, Mayor, we have Russ Jones on this item as well.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I just, I'll make this brief. I just, I didn't say anything during the P&amp;Z meetings, but this particular development, the developer has already paid their fair share of the cost of the infrastructure, so I approve that. And it's on the west side. I approve that. And there is a need that we recognize for additional housing, which I approve, so I am in support of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Russ.
And Jonathan Klein.
Okay, good. Unless you want to talk again? No? Okay, just want to clarify. Thank you. Anyone else?
No, Mayor. That's all.
So, Mayor, I have a question for Jose. So Sonia, can you, can you bring up the map again? So the above area is the one that they submitted for the minor land amendment, and it's currently commercial?
Yeah.
And they resubmitted that again with what the city asked for?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, there's anyone from the public? No questions from council? I will now entertain a motion to close public hearing.
I'll move. Second.
There's a motion on the floor. There's a second. All's in favor?
Aye.
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 All's against? Motion carries. I will now entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 2199, approving major general plan amendment, case number 2021-0337, as recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission, agreed terms in regards to the traffic setting.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor. There's a second. All's in favor?
Aye.
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 All's against? Motion carries. Now it's 6D. Public hearing followed by discussion and possible action on all matters regarding major amendment case number 2021-0340 and resolution number 2200. A resolution of the Mayor and City Council of San Luis Obispo amending the 2040 general plan to change to land use designation of land located in the southeast corner of County 23rd and a Half Street and Avenue E from commercial to medium-density residential. I will now entertain a motion to open public hearing.
I'll move, Mayor.
Second.
There's a motion. There's a second. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All's against? Motion carries. Jose Guzman, Director of Planning and Zoning. Jose, please.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. So this request, based on the general plan policies, that is recommending approval of the land use designation change from commercial to medium-density residential for 106 acres and denial of the request from employment to medium-density residential on 74 acre. The applicant already submitted plans for a subdivision at their own risk, but they're ready to move forward on the, on the approval of the recommendation of staff. So we presented this item to the commission, and they recommended, they did the same recommendation as that. So we have three motions. The option number one is approving the recommendation from staff and the commission. Option number two is approving the whole application. And option three is to deny the application.
So a motion two is to approve the whole application?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the applicant is here in case you have any question.
Yes, can we have the applicant come and give us a briefing? Brief, Najah, please. Okay, I, I know you.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. I will be very brief. If it goes more than two minutes, stop me.
Okay, thank you.
The, thanks to staff and to the Planning and Zoning Commission, everybody that worked on this. I just wanted to make something, it seems like things have changed now. We granted an approval for the west half, denial for the east half, because we don't want to jump D and a half. Well, now I want to ask for all of it. Because, you know, the land to the south, you gave them all of it. It's just like they say, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. The traffic impact study is being worked on. We already master-planned it. You guys know what we're going to do. It's residential. We, we already submitted the, the master plan to the city. We, we submitted the first phase. We already have the second phase designed, so we are ready to go and build some houses. The, as, as far as some of the stuff that staff were concerned about, the buffer zone, where the prison is, and the, and the wastewater treatment plant, we are providing that. If that needs to be larger, bigger, whatever, we will discuss it, negotiate it with staff. We are willing to do whatever is needed. And I really thank you. Any questions?
I just, I just want to say a comment. Many, 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 many years ago, I was corrected, it is not a prison, it is, it is a correction facility.
Yeah, yeah, it is. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it, it, okay.
I know the mayor then remembers. Could I remember?
And, and we will be a good neighbor to the correction facility.
Okay, just for clarification.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
I got a question for you, Najah. I didn't ask the previous applicant on the other major amendment, because they, they put it on the presentation. A lot of the concerns of the stakeholders and everything is that working for the smart growth for five, 10 years in regards to an alternative route for the truck down the future when all this stuff develops, which would be five to 10 years for an office, like. Is that something that you're, you guys are also willing to work with the stakeholders in regards to helping acquire or, or, you know, help at least be part of that discussion in some form?
Yes, absolutely. I mean, we, we are known to do whatever is needed to be done. You know, whatever the needs, we will meet those needs.
Because it's not only, it's not only because of the traffic, it's also for the safety of the residents of the homes that are being built in that area. So I want to make sure you guys are on board in that and understand that concern of the stakeholders, the Port Authority that came out here earlier and also presented their opposition to the.
Yeah, I mean, we, we've been, we've been working in the city of San Luis for a long time, and there hasn't been an occasion where things that were required that we did not meet. We, you know, we, we'd like to do whatever is needed, you know, to provide whatever services that is needed. For example, staff have requested a park. We provided a five-acre park for, for this development, so you know, we have a traffic impact study that is being worked on right now. Whatever road improvement that is needed, you know, and I understand from the previous application that there is a traffic impact study being done there. So, yeah, we are all in it together at the end of the day that we will provide whatever is needed, be provided to, we don't want to build homes and be unsafe or, or.
We're recording this, right?
How many minutes? Yeah.
No, you're, you're fine, fine.
Well, I wasn't going to quit, but he asked.
Najah, you're ahead. Stop. Thank you.
Hey, at least you had more than 30 seconds than last night, so.
Thank you. He was good to me last night.
That's always good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Najah.
Thank you. Anyone else? Do we have anyone from Sonia, from part of the public?
Yes, we have Russ Jones.
Russ?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Maybe the third time is the charm. Who knows? I just want to say that I, I support the P&amp;Z's recommendation. The plan that was presented that I saw at the last P&amp;Z was well-thought-out and, and, and seemed to be a reasonable presentation. With one caveat. Each individual development is doing their own little transportation study that applies just to their little field. I know the city is involved in a much larger transportation study. And I would just ask that council would make all of these developments, as part of the development agreement, subject to the analysis and recommendation of the larger transportation study and its recommendations for adequate infrastructure necessary to, to handle the growing commercial traffic, pedestrian traffic, and POV traffic. I will, I do applaud the idea that the school's not going to be there. Thank God. Because the first child that was crossing after school hours, he, they got hit by a car or a truck on his way to play in the fields there at the school would be on all of our conscience, and I don't think any of us want that. The other caveat is, I would ask that again, that as a component of the development agreement, the developers agree to cooperate and work with and join the Port Authority in creating a district, because I'm not sure how the city of San Luis is going to afford all of its own to pay for all that infrastructure, plus deal with Cesar Chavez and deal with the new port at San Luis One. So I would, that would be my request and recommendation. Thank you, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Russ.
Nieves Raydell. Agustin Tumbaga Jr.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I apologize. I wasn't able to run like everybody else up here.
No worries.
I just kind of wanted to, well, first of all, I want to, you know, congratulate you and thank you for approving the first two that you have. Because one of the things that happens, especially with us, I, I've been here five years, going on five years in regards to our commercial development here in town. And my biggest fear is the message that you guys send out to the community, out to investors, is what actually helps the current businesses and the future growth on the current businesses. There's been, there's four cities, of course, in our county. There's two cities that decided not to do that. They decided to stop developing. And you can see what happened with them. I mean, now they're trying to push the development in their areas, and development isn't going there. They're coming here to San Luis. Now, our biggest part in regards to, to the plaza is that even with everything that's been going on with COVID and so forth, out of the 40-plus locations that we have for rent, we only lost two tenants. One because they were relocating to a different area in the state, and the other one was because they counted on the traffic from Mexico to come here. So that says a lot for what you guys have done in the community, that your local population can carry the businesses. When things are being denied in regards to houses and so forth, that sends a different messages to people that want to invest in San Luis. Luckily, at the plaza, we're finishing up our 10,000-square-foot building. That'll be the new border gym location. We are working on another 10,000-square-foot for rental spaces. We have a fast food location still negotiating to go on the corner there of the plaza. And we have a car wash, drive-through car wash with all the amenities wanting to locate there also. As you can see, people want to come to San Luis. As you can see, people want to come to San Luis and it's because of the leadership and the process and allowing people to be able to work to see what the future growth of it. I I would ask, you know, the only thing I'd ask is continue going through that process. I would hope that you would approve the whole, this whole request because those houses are still needed. I mean, it'll be the first time that I come and try to build as many houses as I can here as selfish as the construction company, but at the same time because I know that the need is here. There's a huge need. With the new schools going in that area, the medical mall and other businesses wanting to relocate, they'd rather live here in San Luis than have to travel from Yuma to come down here. But I would just ask, you know, for the support of this of this item and hopefully approve the whole item. I don't know if there's any questions from council?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you, mayor and council.
Anyone else?
No, mayor.
Okay. For clarification, the city has never been against development. The city has always thought about this, we need to be smart when growing. We really need, we worry about the traffic. For those who live among us, see what happens at between seven and nine o'clock in the morning. See what happens between the hours of two and three thirty in the evening. Basically, the middle of our city shuts down because of poor planning, because someone decided to put schools next to major arteries throughout Juan Sanchez, Osasuna Chavez. So we do not, we do not want to commit the same errors that previous councils did because that was those, in my opinion. We needed those schools, I understand that. It was tough times, but to put schools next to major arteries, even ADOT is questioning why, why, why? And I think is, we just, we want to, we want to continue this growth? We're the fastest growing community in the state of Arizona. Which other city locally, Yuma County, has three major developments like we just are about to approve? I can't say what's going to happen on this one, but we're very grateful for the developers, for investing in the city of San Luis because it's an investment and a lot of people are not investing at this point in time. But you decided to continue working with the city, you decided to continue investing in our future. We hear the concerns of our our merchants, we hear the concerns, but we also hear the concerns of our residents. So we're not against development. All it takes is just tweaks, a park. How many parks does the city of San Luis have? One, one. So we have a lot of, what is it, water retentions made as parks, but they're not parks. So we need a lot more green. Do we require traffic studies? Yes, we do. That's part of every, any, any development. Was this early? Yes, for the same reason Russ was here, because we worry about the whole, the whole, once all three developments start occurring, it's going to change the whole dynamics. What is it, going to be close to four thousand homes? So it it is an accomplishment. It's going to change the whole dynamics of the city of San Luis, if you look at it. So we worry about that. But the city of San Luis, this council is very pro-construction, pro-business, and we will continue doing that, but we need to be smart about it. I appreciate the hard work. I'm really glad that you decided to continue investing in the city in San Luis and we're very grateful. I just wanted to say that, okay? So thank you and thank you for coming tonight. Any comments or questions from council?
Yes, sir.
If not, I will not, any more comments from the public? If not, I want to take a motion to close public hearing.
So move, mayor.
Second. There's a motion on the floor, there's a second, all is in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All is against. Motion carries. I will now take a motion.
Mayor, move to approve resolution number twenty two zero zero, approving major general plan amendment case number twenty twenty one zero three forty.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor, there's a second, all is in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All is against. Motion carries. Do we have more people on call to the public?
We do have one person on call to the public, but not on the items.
Okay, sounds good. Well, first, we're going to summarize current events, events by mayor, council members, and our city manager present to ARS thirty eight dash four thirty one point zero two. Any current events at this point in time? Well, we did have a bike ride this this Saturday. Thank you for those people, thank you staff for making difference, PD, paramedics, everyone. It was, it was a very good bicycle ride. It was only twenty four miles, but it was only twenty four miles. For those who, next year, I welcome to come. Our youngest participant was six years old and he made it all the way to San Luis. So so that just tells you something, okay? And I believe our older was close to eighty, okay? And he used one of those pipeds, but they made it. So it was, it was a beautiful, beautiful weather and I just just remember next year, it's, it's, it's a beautiful ride and it's a very enjoyable ride and it's not a race, but the scene was was beautiful, to see the agriculture, to see the the different people. It's just, it was just amazing, so. And to see young mayors working together, there was a representative from Brawley, from Callexico, the mayor, so it was really good. So this is where California comes and they say, wow, we should be doing this. And and when I heard that, I was like, yes, we are doing something, something, something good, something's great is happening in the region. So it was, it was a great event. We also had the expo, the Baja Expo, which is, was, there were basically a lot of vehicles and so a lot of, it was a very good turnout, so thank you, San Luis, for stepping up to the plate. And any, anything else? If not, I will, we were not going to go with call to the public. This is the time for the public to comment. Members of city council may not discuss items that are not specifically identifying the agenda therefore present to ARS thirty eight dash four thirty one point zero one eight. Action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, responding to any criticism and scheduling the matter for further consideration and discussion at a later date. Call to public, can I, can we have that person?
Elizabeth Luera.
Buenas tardes. Muy buenas tardes a todos, a usted mayor y a todos los council y de las personas presentes. Yo he venido aquí con ustedes. Mi nombre es Elizabeth Luera y he venido aquí con ustedes para pues preguntar y saber qué está pasando con con la resolución eso de los taxistas que andamos volando en la calle. O sea, yo soy una de las personas que anda volando en la calle. Entonces quiero saber que si hay alguna resolución tomada con ustedes de que pues todos seamos iguales, todos tenemos el mismo derecho de trabajar y agarrarlas a recoger personas que vienen de México para acá y pues tenemos las mismas necesidades todos. No sé por qué haya una separación de los taxistas diciendo que cuando estábamos allá en la, ahí donde los quitaron donde estaba la, la, de los carros, ¿cómo se llama?, el parqueadero. Todo estaba muy bien, todos, todos trabajados, todos hacíamos líneas, no había problema de nada, ni envidia, ni nada. Entonces yo nomás vengo a saber si han tomado alguna resolución sobre esto porque yo soy una de las personas que anda volando en la calle. Entonces no sé si ustedes han tomado en cuenta, pues yo he venido aquí a hablar y pues yo necesito también trabajar igual que todos. Entonces pues yo pienso que todos debemos de trabajar igual, ¿verdad? Y pues nomás yo vengo a decir eso es todo, a ver si hay alguna resolución que hayan tomado ustedes porque nomás se oye bla, bla, bla por todas partes y entonces pues no, yo no veo, de lo que dicen yo no veo ninguna resolución que hayan tomado todavía, ¿verdad? Entonces necesito pues saber para saber yo qué hacer porque es mi trabajo lo que yo vengo a pedir, ¿no? Es en lo que yo trabajo y con lo que yo me sostengo, ¿verdad? Este es todo, señor mayor.
Gracias.
Muchas gracias por escucharme.
Gracias.
That is all, mayor.
Thank you. I will now take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second. There's a motion, there's a second, all is in favor.
Aye.
All is against. Motion carries. Have a good night, thank you.